Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Moose Lake City Council to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Okay, approval of the agenda. We do have a couple additions. On there K will be Resolution 25 dot zero two dot zero two. And that has the video with the squad card tablets. And L will be First National Bank Arena. Daktronic sign. Are there any other additions? If not, is there motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? All favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Consent agenda. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting, January eighth, twenty twenty five. Minutes from the special city council meeting, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Other financial reports in city accounts payable, January twenty twenty five. City financial statement, January twenty twenty five. And the liquor store profit, loss statement for January twenty twenty five. Questions or comments on those? Motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Public comment. This time is reserved for comments from the public on that is not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments for three minutes. Uh, seeing any? More is department reports. First, we have the Carlton County Sheriff's Office.
Good afternoon. I'll start with the activity report. And then, on behalf of Sheriff Lake, we're proud to introduce the next contract deputy for Moose Lake, Deputy Hernandez. It'll come up here shortly. So as far as the activity for January of twenty twenty five, handled one hundred nine calls for service within the city of Moose Lake. The contract deputies completed twenty-three extra patrol details, twenty-eight traffic stops, twenty business checks, one community engagement, eight on-site public assist and three paper services, responded to sixteen calls for services and two medical assists. The other county deputies did four extra patrol details, fifteen traffic stops and one business check, three paper services, thirteen Stone Guard Patrol checks. The other deputies handled thirty-two calls for service in addition to an assist to their agency and a medical in the city of Moose Lake. That total, one hundred nine calls for service. With, uh, any questions about the activity? So with that, I'll have Deputy Hernandez come up. He worked a year or so in our jail and then started his field training as a deputy in October. We completed that up mid-January. He started out here January twenty fifth. So with that, we have two deputies working the contract. They are on opposite sides of the schedule, so we have a deputy scheduled in town with one shift, either a night shift or a day shift depending on the schedule each day now. And then, we will be looking at starting our next hiring process hopefully here in the next few weeks to have the other deputies as well.
Hello, I'm Deputy Jordan Hernandez. I started at the sheriff's office on the road for four months. I look forward to serving the small community of Moose Lake and hopefully protecting and serving everybody. Trying to reach out to people and talk to them, get out of my comfort zone a little. Are there any questions you guys have for me?
Well, welcome to Moose Lake.
Yeah, it's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Next, we have City Superintendent Bill Eifner.
Mayor, Minister O'Neal's. Busy month here, some of these have started to pick up. We all know that, nobody likes that. We're still down a guy, that's tough going, but it is what it is. We'll start with the water department. Month of January, it should be four point eight million gallons of drinking water month of January. I'm going to hope everyone listens to this, and I would recommend everyone look at the city of Moose Lake frozen water and sewer policy. If you don't understand it, call me. I will stay late, I will meet you early, I will meet you on weekend, I don't care. Frozen water lines are awful, no one likes them. We have multiple ways to mitigate that. We do have some services that are starting to freeze up. There, we have some that we prevented from running. So, we've got that water running to enable it, those services are freezing. We have some that have, we, uh, we need catch soon enough, um, that they had froze, they had been thawed out and they're back open service. It is the responsibility of the property owner to monitor the water temperature. So, when you call Public Works and the water isn't running, we're going to help you, but we're not going to do everything for you. It's not the city's responsibility to make sure your water isn't freeze. So, I would refer everyone to go back to the policy and look at it. Please call me, call Public Works, call the office, email me, whatever you have to do. Ounce of preventions with Tony here, is that what it's called? In the state, right? Yeah, okay. So then, with that being said, suppose sewer fund, the sewer department, ten point three million gallons of waste water collected in the month of January. We will be starting our center sewer cleaning program here in the next three weeks till month, when the temps warm up. About thirty thousand feet of pipe will be cleaned internally, so just in-house with just the crews we have and equipment we have. That's a savings of almost sixty thousand dollars instead of contracting network. So, which is good because we definitely don't have the money to do that, so. Atable facility, I'll be down in St. Cloud at the Minnesota World Water Trade Show. Looking for other opportunities we can utilize at the wastewater facility as far as trying to gain more capacity because that's our number one goal. Street Department, last two months, we've been doing a lot of right-of-way clearing of the snow being on the ground. That's shut down now, we have enough snow, we can't get through the ditches, we can't get through the right-of-ways. But now, snow and ice removal, equipment, we've had some equipment issues. We're working through that. I think the last piece of equipment got back on the road today, and we had four pieces down over the weekend. So, it was, it was tough going, so, but we'll, we'll get there. So you'll see some expenditures coming through for some equipment. Cemetery is shut down for the year, campground shut down for the year, parks, gardens are all shut down for the year, the arena, the compressors are working pretty good, they're still working out some bugs, working on connecting that skater system that was a promo to the arena, for the hockey association for that. Working on a couple of grant things with Hernandez, City Gardener, should be some more to, we'll be talking about more of that in March. Other than that, that's all I have for right now. Any questions?
Thank you. Municipal liquor store report. Brian?
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor Michalski, Administrator Owens. Things are going well down at the liquor store. Next entertainment we have is a band called North Smoke. They'll be in on March fifteenth. We are currently looking for different quote and options for condensers for our cooler, they are failing. Right now, they're okay, but they're going to fail at some point here. We're looking at dishwasher options, that continues to have problems for us. We, Mari and I have been going back and forth with Brenda from the MMBA about some quarterly inventory counts, a different type of procedure where, I believe I talked about this last month, but where we don't have to close the store on January first and do one huge inventory and be closed all day on what would be a normal profitable day for us. There would be quarterly, having quarterly, and we would just do categories of liquor throughout the year. So this is done in other municipalities, so we're just learning about it and getting procedures done. I've already checked with auditors, and as long as we have some approved procedures, they said good to go, so they've seen it too. And then, we had a spot check from the Minnesota Office of Cannabis. They came down. We had an employee working there, he did great. I talked to Garrett Larson, who did the spot check on us. He said we passed with flying colors. There was one thing of note, that they pulled one item from our shelves, it didn't have the proper barcode on it. When he looked it up, the company, it also, it wasn't correctly labeled on their website either, so that was pulled. And Burnix was notified because Burnix is the one that sold it to us, so. And that's the proper way to do that, the proper channel, so. Let you read through that, but it's not a very pretty report that they use, so. Any questions?
Was this a surprise check?
You bet. You know, we were ready.
It's good they're all up on.
Yeah? Thank you. You bet. Next, we have the technological library department.
Yeah, IT wise, um, we also were paid a visit by the Lady of Minnesota Cities for their cybersecurity, loss prevention, a gentleman named Garrett Johnson. There'll be a report that we'll follow up with how that went next month, but it all went great. But he has sent me a lot of suggestions, but we passed with flying colors on that as well. I've been updating our phishing campaigns and our trainings that go out every now and then, so be wary of phishing emails. Uh, let's see. Assisting the arena with a new online monitoring system for the new compressors that are down there. We're just navigating that and hope to have that up, and that'll help with efficiency down there. And if there's a problem, they'll be alerted to it right away. Any questions, IT wise?
All right.
Hi, good evening, members of council, thanks for being ministered. So it's been quite winter so far, I think the cold temperatures have been keeping people inside. So we didn't have as many people signed up for our winter reading program this year, but we did have a good amount, so several adults signed up as well, so we had good participation with that. I have started work on our annual report, so I've been starting to put the numbers all together for that, and I should be done by the end of the month, since I've learned how to do it well and modified my process, so I'll get it well in before the due date of April. We did have more visitors, looking at the visitor count from two thousand and four compared to two thousand and three, about a thousand more people that came in. So it's always nice to see that we're getting more people from our community coming into the library. And in the library itself, we have been shifting things around a little bit. We now have display cases for our new easy reader books and our juvenile books, so people can just come in, see the covers of the new items that are out, and with more visibility and accessibility, they can go off the shelves quite a bit faster. Also in our library, for tax season, we do have the federal ten forty and ten forty SR forms for free at our library with the instruction booklets included. So any member of the community, don't even have to have a library card, you can come in and get the tax forms. We do have the contact number for Minnesota State forms, if you want to call and have them delivered to your house. We can also print the Minnesota forms for you from the library, so we just can pull those up for any member. And for our library board, Emily Hedman, sadly she has resigned from the library board, so we do have another opening there. We'll be accepting letters of interest from the local community, anyone who's interested in becoming part of the library board and supporting our community. All right, any questions on the state of the library?
Thank you.
One more item to bring up is a request to attend the annual conference for the American Library Association. Every so often, I do attend training to continue my education as a librarian, and there's always lots of good programs, librarians networking and creating wonderful solutions to connect with the community a lot better. So the next annual conference is going to be in Philadelphia in the end of June. My library board is excited about my, the possibility of me going and attending and learning a ton more to bring back to our community.
Just to provide a little bit more information, Laura had brought forward the training request to me. We were able to have some really great dialogue. We looked at the library budget to look, to see where there could be monies available. As part of our discussion, there has not been a training and instruction line item within the library budget thus far. I just think that the request has never been made. It would be my recommendation that we do have a training and instruction budget for the library director in order to be able to take advantage of some of these opportunities. We did review, the last time that Laura attended a training was twenty twenty-one, so it's been a couple of years. Our dialogue had discussed, or we had discussed in our dialogue that this type of opportunity, you know, may only be possible every so often, every few years. It's been a couple of years in itself, so we were discussing it with the library board. The library board did make a recommendation that she be able to attend. The library board has discussed utilizing book sale money from the library book sale, which last year netted about four thousand dollars in order to be able to cover some of these expenses. So I definitely feel like it's something that we can do from a fiscal standpoint, and I absolutely support the request from a growth and development opportunity standpoint as well.
So any questions from the council?
You're looking at that total, twenty twenty?
Correct. And we have discussed that maybe on the high side of things, when we've looked at different opportunities or, you know, different line items within that, but looking for approval of the amount for the training.
Motion.
Make that motion.
Is there a second? For the discussion. Carry on, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carry.
Thank you.
Melissa, can you pull that mic closer to you and facing you, because I can't, they can't hear online.
Next, we have the city engineer report.
Yeah, so in the packet, council received two different sets of meeting minutes. The first was from a January tenth coordination meeting with MSOP. The second was from the monthly update meeting. I will touch base on just a couple of items here pertinent to the monthly update meeting. We've got some really exciting news. Under the MPCA grant application section, section three, a letter A, the city was notified that we have received a six hundred fifty-eight thousand dollar grant from the MPCA relevant to a DOC trunk sewer lining project that we have submitted. So we are now working in coordination with the city engineers in the background regarding completing the necessary paperwork in order to accept that grant. Another thing that we're working with the city engineers on is that we will be creating some type of communication to go to our local legislatures. Right now, we have submitted a three million dollar project to the state for a city lining project that would line all of the city sewer infrastructure. An exciting component would be that we could utilize the six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar grant as part of our one point five million dollar match. So we absolutely want our legislators to have that information and to just kind of bolster our, um, our position as far as being able to come up with our portion of that project request. So, really exciting news, we're going to continue to work through that in the background. Our city engineers have been excellent to work with, and we're really excited about that. In addition, you'll see under section four regarding the school property developments, the city has been meeting with the county EDA director, and the county EDA director has been also coordinating with our Moose Lake EDA. And one update that I have to share with council is that the Carlton County EDA plans to contribute a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the waterline extension for phase one of the residential development. So between the city's contribution and the county EDA's contribution, the waterline extension will be paid for, for, in order to start and break ground this spring yet. So, really exciting news, we're, we're going to continue to collaborate. We're now working with the county EDA director on some other items, and I will update council as I have more information, but we are now seeking funding for infrastructure opportunities for phase two and/or three of the development. So, working through that, and really happy to have their collaboration. Are there any other questions regarding that meeting minutes from the engineer report?
Thank you. Next, we have Chamber Commerce update.
So today we have Michelle Anderson. She is the executive director of the chamber, and she'll provide the update.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to share, we have some new board members, Cara Keenan with Pine County, Mark Gutierrez from Minnesota Soil and Health Conservation, Haley Smith, Denise Bergeroff State Farm Insurance, and she's also our secretary, and Judy Ole with Ole Art Gallery. Our president is Penny Galatley, past president Sean Adams, Donna Kirk is our vice chair, and Dan Corbell is our treasurer. Currently, we are working on our annual visitor guide, and we've expanded the events section in it, and actually we have some library events, and they're annual events this year. We did, we were awarded an eight thousand dollar Explore Minnesota Tourism grant, and it is a refundable grant, so we need to spend it to get it refunded, and it, it all has to be spent on events and marketing, so we're excited for that. And we're also excited to share upcoming event dates. July third is the Kitty Parade at ten AM, and we're moving it to the Moose Lake City Park this year. July fourth is on a Friday, and we look forward to a busy weekend, and we will again ask for a military flyover of the parade. Egghead Days festivities are July nineteenth and twentieth, and one big change this year is the Chamber of Commerce is taking over the stampede, and we're excited to take part of that. We've always helped with it, but this year, we will fully be responsible for it. Brew Fest is August nineteenth at five PM on that same day. Again, we will be asking for space in the parking lot of the Moose Lake Municipal. Our Nine and Die Golf is July twenty-fifth, and the Moose Lake Tarathon is August ninth. And we are looking to expand that event this year to, to get some more participants and make it more of a more festive area. New this year, we will host a bingo on August twenty-third at the Barnum Municipal and their event center. Our events have been growing, and we are grateful to support all of our local communities. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have previously discussed business. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission, electric utility waiver update.
So I collected some materials in the council packet regarding a January thirtieth meeting where city administrative staff did attend the commission meeting. The city was able to provide the commission with an update on where we're at with the residential development, and so some of those items were included in the packet as well. We also provided an update to the commission regarding the electric utility waiver that has been established between the two entities. We were able to generate reporting information for their review regarding the city's expenditures for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four pertinent to the, pertinent to the development. The agreement has been that the city utilized the one hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of savings towards the residential development, and so we were able to substantiate that for the commission. In addition, the commission looked at the verbiage in previous motions, so I did incorporate the meeting minutes from April sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, and then again, the January thirtieth meeting. Essentially, what was established was that the commission made a motion to continue with the three-year commitment to waive electric utility fees for the city. If the phase three urban development doesn't occur before the end of the three years, any unspent monies from the five hundred and forty thousand dollar commitment would be returned. Just wanted to provide council an update. We don't foresee any issues with that. I think the commission just wanted to make sure that our, our commitment stands, that we'll be utilizing the monies over the course of the next three years for that project and that project only. So it was a good collaborative meeting. The motion essentially highlights our continued work with the commission, and so we're really thankful for that, and we'll continue to be accountable and transparent of what we're doing on our end.
Any questions or comments? Moving on to new business, we have the Carlton County Riders ATV Club.
So in the council packet, the city, the city council received the, an email from Mr. Greg Zimmerman, who was in attendance tonight. In addition, there was a map that was provided. And just a, a little bit of background, we did discuss this request with the city engineers. SEH is actually coordinating with the Carlton County ATV Riders as well, not our particular working group, but a branch of SEH as well, so we have a little bit of connection on the backside as well. So this is Greg Zimmerman.
Greg Zimmerman is our trail coordinator. I'm, I'm the president of the Carlton County Riders ATV Club. My name is Eric Sanderiggy. So I kind of wanted to maybe step back just a little bit, since there's already been some conversation regarding the subject, but it's been a few years since I've addressed this group, and I see there's some new faces and, and people here, so I want to kind of touch on a little bit of history here real quick. So since I've been here last, I've been actually awarded two state awards for Safety Instructor of the Year for ATV youth. I've actually received two national recognitions, one from NOVAC, which is the National Off-Highway Vehicle Conservation Council, and I was also awarded a helmet from the RideSafe organization, which I worked with in Barnum on September twenty-three for the RideSafe event there, where we talk to like nineteen hundred area students here. I'm also on the ATV Minnesota State Safety Committee. Quick history on Moose Lake specific, back during COVID, I started the Moose Lake Area ATV Management Group, which I worked directly with Darren Juttnen, he was a huge advocate. That was kind of during when the sport was exploding, everybody was going outside. I worked with him on doing some projects around the community here. We kind of identified some areas that needed some kind of special attention. Some of those things include the soup pits reroute to get the machines away from the old County Eight and the, and the people that live along that route. We had some landfill boundaries put up for the abandoned landfill. People were driving in there, myself included. I had no idea that's what that area was until after I got involved here. Let's see, we improved the crosstown trail behind the Holiday, put in some crossings there, worked with the Evergreen Pack, the local club here in town, and got some of those things completed. All of those projects were successful. One other area that we identified was this bridge that crosses Moose Horn. That's kind of being a, a safety issue, number one. Statistically, two-thirds of the ATV fatalities are within a road right-of-way. Actually, in twenty twenty-four, it was seventy-four percent. So this is kind of a big deal. I think about the two-way traffic on the shoulder of the road there, it's been working up until this point, but like I say, statistically, somebody's going to die there. I mean, that's kind of the reality of it. That's a state highway. You end up, I imagine myself driving south in town, past the hockey shelter, and I would have headlights coming at me with the wheeler on this side, and then northbound traffic. It, it was, it's just, it's real kind of sketchy. So, trying to search our ways to get across that river. Our first move is to get a plan. I'm not an engineer or a biologist, so that kind of leaves me in a position to where I need to hire somebody to do a feasibility study and to design us a crossing of that river, and that's kind of where SEH comes into play. That company has done a lot of other bridges for the ATV community of North, and I work with Jason Chau, I've been throwing names around over here already today, so we know a lot of the same people. My intent is to apply for step zero from the grant aid process. That money comes from a dedicated That money comes from a dedicated account in the state that is funded by the user and our license plate tab money goes into that account. So we would apply for that step zero to be able to hire SEH to give us a feasibility and build us a plan on what that bridge would look like. Once we have a plan and a cost estimate, we can apply for funds from the ATV dedicated account, which we continue, intend to continue to work with SEH on that. This is our direction forward, kind of from the DNR. We met with Mary, Parks and Trails here in town. That was kind of the direction she gave us to go. Also with our sponsor from the county, that was pretty informative. So basically, we're here to ask support from the city and the community on this crossing improvement over the Moose Horn River in Moose Lake. Is there any questions for me or Greg?
Any questions? I think it's a good idea to get them off the bridge. We can't get them off the bridge.
Well, it's a state highway for one thing, first and foremost. So that is again state law for one. However, it's a key connector to bring machines into town from the south. I mean, I get it, I made, actually, I made the comment at one of the meetings. I'm like, do we seriously need a separate bridge for every mode of transportation across that river? But with Willard Munger being a federal grant paid for through his organization, that's kind of off the books. And so the state highway is also off the books, which leads us to, we need to own crossing. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have short L.A. Hendrickson, SEH Tyler, for an update on water storage capacity.
Thank you, Mayor Machowski, and members of the council. It's good to see you all again. I'm going to give a little bit of a background, just bring everybody up to speed. City Moose Lake treats its wastewater through a outdoor pond system. It's actually the second largest pond system in the state. And back in 2018, I think it was brought up for us to start looking into capacity with different campground expansion, Sand Lake Resort, I don't know how far back that went, but different development, new connection needs. And wondering where our capacity is at. So back in 2018, we ran our first capacity memo, which had a hydraulic capacity. We were at 95% capacity with our hydraulics or flow into the ponds and 87% of our organic capacity at the ponds at that time. So, which is a big red flag. The MPCA regulates the permit for the city. And usually at 80% is when it kind of triggers them looking closer at the city's pond system. So at that high of a level of capacity, if the city wanted to develop an area of town or whatnot, they might be denied allowing new connections to the system because risk of overflow, that kind of thing. So we started thinking about ways that we can increase the amount of capacity within the system. A few options, one is going to a treatment plant, which is very expensive. All pay millions of dollars to get constructed and installed. Expanding the pond system, which is highly unlikely because the city's pond systems aren't the second largest. Taking more green space up for a pond system is not ideal in the perimeter's eyes. So then we looked at alternate options of reducing the amount of flow into the system. So obviously, you still have the same amount of connections. Everybody's connected to the system. You can't just cut people off and increase capacity that way. But looking at inflow and infiltration with groundwater and water from manholes or whatnot enters into the system, which is, so you're treating runoff water basically and spending money on it. So reducing that. And so we started looking at sewer lining projects. And so back in 2020, I believe it was, our first sewer lining project that the city had budgeted for. And then continuing that for the five consecutive years, just wrapping up our current one this year in 2024. So we have, the big thing from the I&amp;I report, or not I&amp;I report, Pond Capacity Report, is we have come down in our hydraulic capacity from 2018 at 95% to calendar year 2024 came in at 82.8%, which is a large reduction, getting very close to that 80% threshold where they watch us. I have no concern if the city were to request new connections at this point and need the permit for those because we've proven that five-year track record of reducing that amount. And you're continuing to budget for those improvements, as far as I understand. The organic loading, on the other hand, it started out at 87%. We got it down to 71% at one point, then it's starting to rise back up a little bit. That's from my best knowledge due to, as you reduce the amount of flow into the system, which dilutes the system. So as you reduce that, that concentration gets higher with the solids. So that's why you're probably seeing that rise. Or it could be also due to, you never know what somebody's putting down the drain. It might be just an increase from solids down the drain that people are flushing down the toilets or whatever. So overall, very good news, you know, looking at roughly 12% reduction over the past five or seven years there. So keep up the good work there. In the memo, page three, figure one, if you, I don't know if you have that in front of you, but that's just a good graphical representation of that decrease that you're seeing. So those I&amp;I projects that you're completing are working. So very good. Other items to note with the memo. So you're now on page, let's see, four, table three, the capacity summary. The calculations come out to be that your new household equivalent of remaining flow capacity in the system is 353 connections, or 353 household equivalents. And from last year, you were at 285, so a large increase there in number of connections. The household equivalent of remaining organic capacity, you were at 442. And last year was 555, so that's where you saw that change in the dilution of that system, sewage water, so. Again, and then at the bottom of that same page, it shows those percentages that I already told you about for the calendar year 2024 capacity. We also added into the memo future planning. So knowledge from city administrator Owens, she passed along that the city had, city council had reserved 10,000 gallons per day of flow for the Moose Lake housing development that's being planned right now. So we added that in there. And then also reserved 1,300 gallons per day of anticipated flow from the Sand Lake Resort. So that is also in here as well. And then like city administrator Owens mentioned, the MPCA grant that the city was awarded, very big deal. In table four on page five, you can see that the DOC and MSOP are currently, over this current review period, 47% of the total flow going to the ponds within the city. So by lining that 15-inch line that feeds those facilities, which has been signified as the worst potential pipe for I&amp;I within the city right now, reducing that could drastically improve the capacity within the system. So be eager to get that project going and done. I think that's about all I have on the pond capacity. I guess if you have any questions for me, I can take them.
I have a question. We were putting in some kind of bugs in the ponds. How does that play into this?
Not at all. The bugs take care of the sludge that's already in the pond. This is taking care of natural groundwater getting into the collection system. Totally are unbelated.
And then for the future lining projects, how often are we going to be able to do a lining project? Is it, are we still going to be able to continue to do that yearly or is that going to?
So we currently have in the 2025 project, we have a sewer lining project established within that. A couple of different components will weigh in. We are potentially looking at a meg meter installation project as being on the docket. We have a $73,000 match as far as the $658,000 grant award is concerned. So that could play into the next couple of years of planning as well. It could take the place of an upcoming project. However, the equivalent of that project is about five years' worth of sewer lining. So that's very significant for the $73,000 contribution for that. And then there'll be some determinations made based on whether or not the city is able to secure any funding from the state for a massive project.
Yeah, for their grant.
Yep, and for the bonding, the $3 million ask for bonding to line all of the sewer infrastructure in the city. So we have a couple of different things at hand here. The plan has been, from an administrative perspective, when we did our rate study, building in the capacity to do some type of sewer infrastructure project on an annual basis. So the rate study has a line item in it of about $100,000 up to about $130,000, I believe, on an annual basis from a fiscal planning standpoint. So that has been incorporated for council.
Tyler. To council on page four of that memo, if you want to pull it back open to the top of it, it shows four TSS sample results. The first two, going back to the organic loading and how the organic loading is assumed to be creeping up, which it should, but I believe, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's creeping up a little faster based on these first two results that we got, the 126, 24, and 57, 24. Average strength or average reading of that TSS should be around 300. So 9, 10, and 11, 25 wouldn't be average. Is this better, Rory?
Yeah, it is.
Perfect. One thing I just want to point out here. That sample on 126 and a sample on 57, what we call those hot samples. That's what we, these are quarterly influence samples that we take. They're a four-hour-long sample that we take that represents the last 90 to 120 days of our flow. Nothing that you guys did. I'm just saying, that's the data that we have to report, right? I know. But what I'm saying is, I think next year when we do this, I think we're going to see that loading come down. Actually, I think it's kind of, I don't want it to scare anybody off.
No, you're right. I totally forgot to mention that. As part of that increase in loading is due to those high samples. It could be something happened during the sampling time that it just got measured slightly off and caused that to be high. So those are definitely outliers from what we're normally seeing. So unless you start seeing that over and over again, then that's something to pay attention to. But I imagine those are going to go away and back to normal.
Especially when they fall off the second half of the year, back to 300. Because they're three and four tenths higher than in our looking.
Yeah, because when we initially looked at this data, I called Phil and I was like, did you do something changing with your sampling?
No, he didn't believe me.
It's just, it doesn't seem normal or fit in what we should be seeing, so.
However, they are reported to the state and those are the numbers we have to use. So I'm just saying, I think we'll see, I think we'll see that number decrease moving forward. Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Good job.
Next, we have Resolution 25.02.01. Resolution adopting data practices policy and appointing a responsible authority.
It's an armful. All right, I'm back up. Yeah, there's quite a bit to digest here. You have Exhibit A, policy for requests from the public. Exhibit B, policy for requests from the data subject. And Exhibit C, policy for ensuring the security of not public data. I think it's fairly to mention a few things that are in here a little bit and give a little overview. For starters, there's a new data request form that's in there. So if this policy is approved, it would now require all requesters to use this form to submit a data request. And staff will start requiring citizens to do so. If a citizen does not use this form, they have not properly submitted a data request. Thus, we are not obligated to respond at that point. It also provides a clear structure for us staff and the public to make it clear when a data request is submitted, so staff can know the timelines. And this will help us avoid situations where there's outstanding vapor requests out there. There's a template for invoicing, that's pretty self-explanatory. There are some informed consent forms. This is used for when individual requests to the city to release private data, protect the city, provide clear authorizations, that kind of stuff. There's copy retrieval cost instructions, pretty self-explanatory on that one. There is a data inventory template in there. Basically, essentially what that is, is a reference for employees to know who has access to certain data. That's all that form is. And then lastly, I guess I would just say, you know, adopting these policies, essentially all they are are instructions for both staff and the requester on how this works, how to request the data, how the city will respond when we get requested, and the details based on whether or not they're requesting data on themselves or another topic or another person. So that's essentially what they are. I think we probably need a motion for each one, probably.
So the resolution covers the policy in its entirety. And we've provided the different components of it. But by approving the resolution, it then gives the authority for the city staff to then implement all the processes that are outlined within.
Questions, comments?
No, I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution 25.02.01.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Absolutely. Did I get everything right, guys?
Yeah, it sounded great.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Thank you. Next, we have Carlton County Animal Rescue LG 220, application for exempt permit.
Oh yes, the city received a request from the Carlton County Animal Rescue regarding a bingo event at the Historical Society.
Questions, comments, motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Carry. Next, we have the Community Center Roo Top Unit replacement quotes.
Yeah, so in 2025, the city budgeted to replace the last rooftop unit on the top of this building. On, in your packet on page 137, I believe, you'll find the first quote. On 138, you'll find the second quote. First quote is for $16,500 for a regional electrical mechanical. And the second quote is for $13,250 for D&amp;E heating.
Are they the same units?
Yes.
Are they the same units that are up there already?
No.
Okay.
Can't get those ones anymore. Those were 20 years ago.
No, from what we've been replacing.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Nope.
We can't, is it? Do these all power together?
They're individual.
Okay.
So we have seven little furnaces on top of our roof that heat this entire building. It is what it is. Did you see it turn on? Is it cold in here?
No.
Seven is not enough, is what she's saying.
Seven, not enough is what she's saying.
I'll make the motion that we, um, go with the, uh, lower bid to D and E for thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Next, we have the Planning Commission vacancy appointment.
Um, yes, the city received a letter of interest from Jan Ashmore regarding serving on the Planning Commission. I did incorporate that into the packet. Um, looking for a motion from council to approve her appointment.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Next, we have the Moose Lake HRA board appointment.
Uh, yes, so in the packet, the council received a letter of interest from Kurt York regarding filling the HRA board appointment. Again, just looking for a formal motion from council to approve. This will actually complete all of our annual appointments for twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. League of Minnesota City's liability, liability coverage waiver.
Uh, yes, so, um, City Council has re, has reviewed this waiver on an annual basis as part of our, um, property and casualty insurance renewal. Uh, the recommendation has been from the city's insurance agent, uh, that the, um, that we do not waive the monetary limits on municipal tor, liability. Um, just looking for formal approval from council. I will complete the waiver and submit it with our, uh, renewal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Uh, Westburg Eisen's twenty twenty-four audit engagement letter.
Uh, Westburg Eisen's is the audit firm that the city utilized for the twenty twenty-three audit. We have received an engagement letter, um, a separate letter for the city, um, one for the HRA and one for the Water and Light Commission to engage in the twenty twenty-four audit. Um, and that engagement letter is what council received in the agenda packet.
Motion approved.
Did you like using them? I know that Water and Light did.
Yeah, absolutely. We had a really positive experience.
Motion approved?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Next, we go to K, resolution twenty-five dot zero two dot zero two.
So the city, um, has been working with the Carlton County Sheriff's Office regarding a couple of rental squad tablets, um, that were in the city's possession following the transition to a law enforcement services agreement with the county. Um, they actually, uh, the sheriff's office informed the city that there was another public entity that, um, utilizes that same type of tablet and could utilize the surplus equipment. Um, I, they did provide me with a connection and I contacted the Superior Police Department. They were very interested in getting the equipment. Um, I then engaged with the city attorneys, um, regarding drafting the resolution to approve the donation from one public entity to another. Um, that is what the council is, is now reviewing. I've also included a bill of sale, um, which, uh, by approving the resolution that's provided to council, um, subsequently approved a bill of sale as well. So we will execute a bill of sale with them. Um, and there's also a document that they will, um, execute that essentially, um, accepts the surplus equipment. Uh, the dollar value associated with this transaction would be zero dollars. Uh, per statute, there's not a requirement, um, that any money be transferred, um, for this type of, um, surplus donation. So it would be the, the city, um, providing the equipment to the Superior Police Department, um, without money's transferred.
Any questions?
The county's not able to use the equipment, in other words?
Correct.
I'll make the motion that we approve, uh, resolution twenty-five point oh two point oh two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Most carry. Next, go to L, the First National Bank Arena, Daktronics sign.
Yes, um, so, a couple months back, we entered into our community partner with First National Bank. They named the arena First National Bank Arena. Everything's doing great. Samantha from First National Bank is on the park board. Actually, she's the chair now, so congratulations to her. Um, part of the agreement was that we were going to get our new sign for out there. Um, really, from my standpoint, the IT side, I just wanted it to be a Daktronic's, which is a very long, proven quality digital board that can be out there. Everyone uses these things. Um, so from my standpoint, that's what we wanted. Um, we wanted a little bit bigger, five by ten, so that's what they did. And then the really, really, the rest of this stuff was more so in their, in their ballpark. So, the, all of the components around the, the digital part, so the First National Bank logo and arena name. So, they decided on scenic sign group. Um, you'll see that in there. And they went with the option two, which is just all that's printed for you. So, their expense would be all of the cabinet sign stuff, um, the display mounted on the building. The Daktronic's part is our part, um, which is the forty-three thousand one hundred. Uh, the other quote, it comes in at forty-three thousand three twenty. Essentially, because it's coming from Daktronic's, they're all going to be about the same price. So for our part of it, um, their part will change drastically. But this was the, the design that they wanted, so they would prefer to go with scenic sign group. They then went by their board, um, at First National Bank. They approved it, and it actually went before the park board also, and they recommended that the council move forward with this choice from them. Um, they have paid their first payment of sixty thousand dollars to, to the arena. So, um, that's moving forward, and it's been a great collaboration. Started a collaboration with them, so. I guess what we're looking for is a final approval to also go with the park board and their, their department at First National Bank and go with the scenic sign group or the digital sign.
Do it one question.
Yeah.
So, will be responsible, or is it the, the arena people that puts the information on the, the legal card?
Uh, it will probably fall under me.
Okay.
Yeah, great question.
Any other questions, motions?
The size of the sign is, there's no issue with that as far as the ordinance or anything like that? Because it doesn't take up much of the circumference of the front.
Yeah, the Daktronic's won't be much bigger, and they'll still have to go through the building official for everything that's going to be around it and all that stuff, and make sure it can hold it, all that good stuff.
Any other questions? Motion to approve going left.
I'll make a motion that we approve the signatic, sign court. Do you want our, the amount in there?
Uh, if you want to.
It's a same length?
Yeah.
For forty-three thousand one hundred dollars?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry.
We're all excited to get this going. In the meantime, we're changing collateral out there to emphasize the new name of the arena, and we'll probably have some kind of grand opening when the sign's going to go up, and, you know, we'll make it a big spectacle. Yes.
That was my question. When do you think this will, will it be spring or?
With these guys, I'm not sure what their lead time is. I'm going to guess late spring. So, probably before naked days. So I'll just keep everyone in the loop.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next, we have J, the MLW SSD, request for arbitration discussion. And with that, the City Council, the City Moose Lake, will meet in closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B due to threatened litigation and demand for arbitration to engage in performance. But, but, uh, arbitration. The meeting will take place in the council chambers of the Community Center at three thirteen Elm Avenue. The following closed session, following the closed session, the council will reconvene at vote, in open session pursuant to the posted agenda for that date and time. And during such open sessions, summarize its conclusion and make any motions. All ready?
We need a motion of applause.
Do we have a motion to close the regular City Council meeting? Is there a second?
Sir, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry.